We'll call it over the Thursday, July 22, 2021 meeting of the council. For please overall.
Mayor Sirksina.
Here.
Council members Klein.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Thank you, Matthew. All present on Canada four. Nice to see everybody. Thanks to all of you for being here. Joining joining us for a meeting. Please stand and join me for the place. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes. By John seconded by Eric. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Okay, the next item is citizens presentation. This is where anyone in the audience can address the council on an item that is not on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody here to do so? Seeing none, we'll move to consent items.
Move the resolution.
Moved by John seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? Pass is five to zero. Thank you. Okay. We now have a presentation and Rachel's going to lead us through that on 2021 Continuous Process Improvement, Public Works and Information Technology. Rachel.
Thank you, Mayor. So Cory and I are here today. Well Cory is here on the computer to talk about the continuous improvement for the year. It was a collaboration between Public Works and IT. I'm going to give you kind of the background of why it was needed and what led to it, and then Cory will walk you through the application and show you how that works. So way back in November of 2018 is kind of when this started. I presented to you all about the MS4 program. And as a reminder, that's the municipal separate storm sewer system. It's a mouthful. Along with that comes a permit with the DNR and that's renewed every five years. There's requirements outlined in that permit. And so at that presentation, I kind of went through those and talked about how we can make improvements and where we might be deficient in those requirements. The biggest thing that came out of that was inspection of the city's BMPs. So those are the post-construction best management practices. That's detention basins, ponds, things like that. So before we could kind of tackle starting to inspect it, we had to figure out how many we had. Where where are these? We had very little GIS data at the time. So we started collecting the data from site plans, construction documents, and the end results were 200 roughly 270 BMPs, 31. Thank you. 31 were city-owned. And then again, we kind of solicited direction at that time. You know, how do we start to tackle this? It was decided that the public ones were the priority. And then then we started to get to how we were going to inspect it. So we wanted to do the most efficient process possible. So that's when we started looking at different applications to do it. Third-party software mostly. We did trial one application before we ended at this Lucity that we'll talk about. It was being used by another city staff or something else, but it just proved cumbersome and it was wasn't able to link up with some of our like workflow processes and our and our GIS data properly. So that basically led me to get with Cory and we collaborated on a Lucity application to inspect those BMPs. And it's just as Cory will show you, it's a really seamless and pretty cool. So that's all I had and I'm going to hand it off to Cory and he's gonna show you the application and get technical with you. So.
All right. Can you guys see my screen? That was the first question. All right. So you can see the so this is the iPad that the field inspectors use and there's a desktop version as well, but it's easiest to see it visually here. So I helped Rachel create a dashboard and you can see there's work order management, inventories, inspection. And so this is how we're we built this application for this project. And the reason why we went with Lucity is because A, we already own it. We don't pay anything. And number two is we can do everything from the inspection all the way down to completing the work that needs to be done on these based on the results of the inspection. So basically we have a map of our entire inventory and I don't won't go into that, but I'll go into these templates we created. And these templates, we can create a inspection for just the Clyde ones or the private. We'll go with the Clyde here. Launch this inspection. This work order. So now we have a new inspection work orders created for Clyde. And I will go back to here. So now I'll refresh this. And now we have three work orders. You guys go out the field and perform these. And they turn, they'll be red, the ones that we need to do the inspections on. You go down here, city-owned facilities are red. We can click on. Repeat the inspection. So we have a form that we fill out and this is one of this is the key part of the entire thing here on the inspector. So Rachel and I developed this form just in-house and different questions to ask, whether it's got vegetation or erosion, just a million different questions here. Quite a million, but it's quite a few. So we can save that inspection. And then I log that I did the work here. And it saves and it shows what time I did the work and who completed it. I go to the next one now, it turns green. So now, as we move along through the city, you could have multiple crews out at the same time and do these inspections and it's live and we know where everybody's been. So it's really handy. And the coolest part then is when we go to our inspections, I can filter these. These are all the inspections we've already done and right there you can see there's the new one. So we go down here, we want to say, we developed an idea that we want to create work orders now to fix things based on the type of issue. So structure issues would create, we'd need different equipment than debris removal or whatnot. So we can pick sedimentation and now it shows the nine work order, nine that have sedimentation issues. And before we go out in the field, we can even select here and see the pictures from at the inspection. This is really handy to know what equipment you need to take out the field with you, maybe to have a better idea of problems. So I can just select these. On the desktop version, the supervisor can actually hit select all. On the iPad, I cannot. But let's take it too long here. Create a new work order. And now we created templates as well. So that way it's just a really quick, fast process. So now that we can say sediment removal, that's what we queried, go to that work order. And now we go to the map for this work order. Now it's just those nine features that need sediment removed. And so now I can go out, do the work, perform the task, enter my labor, my equipment, my material. And we have it done in a fairly quick and seamless and live fashion. So any questions on this side of it from you guys?
Hey Cory, when you so when you do a complete inspection, then what's the renewal on the next one?
What's can you repeat that again?
Is it what's the what's the timeframe until the next inspection is required?
That's Rachel could probably answer that.
Yeah. So that's something we're still working through. Per the permit, it's just required once a permit cycle. But with the water resources master plan and some of the data that they've collected on the BMPs, we're trying to figure out what makes the most sense. I think some you're going to want to expect more than every five years. But some, you know, maybe a parking lot detention basin. You can do that every five years, that type of thing.
So you've got to factor that into this into this program then as far as when this particular site is inspected.
Yep, exactly. So let me take us all back quickly to February when we had HDR here presenting on all of the BMPs that they had started to do an assessment of. In addition, at that time, we had not completed all of this assessment work that the city staff had done. And we still have assessment work to do of the private BMPs throughout the city. But what we know from our initial assessment is that due to certain soils, due to certain outlet structures and other design features of these mostly private BMPs, some have the potential to produce different outcomes than others. Some like parking lots don't change much over the course of five years. So we don't, we don't need to go back to those with the same kind of frequency. Whereas others, we may want to go back and see once every two years or once every three years. But the the driver of that will be an actual evaluation of their existing conditions now. And then also their potential to deliver future outcomes as well. And you can see how putting all that together allows us to create some prioritization then about where we decide to put our resources on this. The other really exciting thing about the work Cory and Rachel have done here is that using the initial 30 approximately 30 public inspections that have been completed and then using this data from Lucity, we can now start to put together estimates on how many hours of work it will take to get through an ideal year of inspections or an ideal ideal cycle of inspections. And with those work hours in place, we can then start to estimate what a true O and M type of cost for inspections is going to be long-term. And that number is essential because we plug that into our budgets every year. It's part of the CIP every year. This is data that helps us really grow into a mature utility and efficient managers of the stormwater funds that are being paid by taxpayers.
No, that's excellent. And so you can so you can customize a site with inspection periods, et cetera, and trend that out.
Exactly, exactly. And so trends over time too for sort of how does that relate to the amount of investment we're making versus the total value of the infrastructure that we have in place? Whether or not we're spending appropriate numbers of hours on on what are we spending on our gray infrastructure versus our green infrastructure over time as well. So there'll be all kinds of insights that this good inspection data yields. It turns on the really good inspection work and data collection being done by the folks at the field though. And for them, that means they have to have a great user experience. So they don't just get frustrated trying to get the iPad to do what they need it to do. It needs to be fast, it needs to be clear. And it needs to be easy then to share across multiple different teams. So we can use this data collectively.
Perfect. Other questions?
So on the time, is that under time sheet? And did we see that? Because I don't see where we're tracking the time.
Oh, as far as the time. So yeah, so on these on these inspections, on these work orders, I go this here, these are the active live work orders here. And so here's the purple that I just created. Within this work order, we have these tasks and each day we create a new task or each time we go out and do work, I should say. So like this task, I would put in employees. I would add an employee. I would add myself. I'm not an actual, I'm a fake it, since I'm not an actual laborer here. So I can put eight hours in and then it it save, I can add my equipment, my material. You know, in here. So I can add all those things and eventually it'll sum it up and tell you how many how many hours you spent on each one on the time. It doesn't actually tell you how much time you spent on each inspection. You can just, it's a rough device. If we say we did eight today, we would say we it's, you know, and you did an eight hours, you roughly inspected eight, you know, one an hour. Some obviously take longer than others. So. But we have the total cost of the of each each activity we do, whether whether it's repair or inspection.
Just a quick reminder, Lucity is our asset management software. That's what creates all our work orders, tracks all our time, all our equipment. So every time we go out at the end of the day, we put in how many man-hours, how many hours of equipment and all that's tracked in there. This was a great format for them to move into there and use utilize to make this inspection system work. Although it looks a little cumbersome, I guarantee you it beats writing it out by hand. And when you use it every day, it's is really quick and.
Yeah.
Use.
Yeah. So great, great platform we use out in the field especially. So this is a web base. They can have real-time interaction then and great opportunity to, like you said, Jeff, not only the man-hours, but also the equipment usage right there. And what do you guys download that into a central database? And I know we use that for CIP and other things, but what a what a great tool and great process improvement.
We sync it every night.
Gotcha. So it does sync every night then.
Yeah, and you can run reports after the fact.
It sinks. Yeah, it actually sinks live. It's all it's all on our servers in-house. I don't know if you can, can you, I don't know if you can see this new web screen I have up or not. Or if it's still the iPad. But.
Still the iPad.
Still the iPad and that's fine. So. There we go. Now you can see that probably now.
Yep, we got you.
So here's supervisor screen and there's only three work orders in here, one for engineering. If I refresh it, there's probably four now. It's because I created that new work order, you know, and so it's it's always live. If I come in here, my employee is already in there, probably on that task. Yep, there's me. And so it's live, it's instant. And this is kind of what the supervisor sees.
Is anybody else using the system like this in the metro area?
Yeah, most of those cities are using something, whether it's Lucity, Cartograph.
Jeff, you might step up to the mic.
Whether it's Lucity, Cartograph, something that most all communities are using something similar.
Everybody's getting away from the handwritten tickets then, right?
Oh, yeah. It's it's, you know, we had this, it was called City Works and it was now Lucity that we went to, but it's been a big step up for us.
I want to emphasize how important that cultural element is. Cory working closely with Public Works. Public Works articulating their needs very clearly. Giving ourselves the time to practice, to make mistakes, to improve, keep refining. All of that has added up to now a full year worth of data that is cleaner and more actionable than anything we've ever had before. But it only happened because of the culture to make the tool good from the start. That was there was that these teams really deserve the credit for. They've done a great job.
That's great. Another questions or comments, council? Great job.
Thank you.
Thanks Cory.
I know Lucity was a big investment, but it's been a wonderful thing for us. It allows me to track potholes. It allows us to give you that information and data. It's been wonderful. It's nice to see it in action. Thank you, Rachel. And and Cory as well, if you're still there.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, we'll move then to discussion. And this is Public Works Works Project Updates. And Jeff?
Mayor Council, good evening. Glad to be here. Update you on a few of the projects here. One of the first ones I guess I want to talk about is Northwest 128th and US 6, which is Hickman. We've been working on it with the DOT for a long time. What started out as just an intersection project grew into also improvements all the way back to the interchange. It took some doing, but we did get some stormwater improvements in there. That has been bid. The bids are in. It'll be starting here. We're waiting on the DOT to have a pre-con and give us some scheduling, but we'll get that to you as soon as we do. Our portion of it, after everything came out, is about 24,000 overestimated costs, which for everything we've done in there is not too bad. Just want to let you know that it is moving. It will be starting and it does include the stormwater management aspect that we wanted in there.
It's timeline on construction on that, Joe?
It'll be yet this year, just exactly when they're trying to schedule the pre-con. Riley just signed the contract here a week or so ago. They'll get a pre-con set up and then all that pre-con is usually when they come and they give us a project schedule and we'll be able to get that information out as soon as we can.
As far as how long it'll take?
They're hoping to be done yet this year.
That's the big question is whether they'll get it done.
It depends how quickly they start, but that their hope is.
Might be in the spring, especially for restoration.
Restoration definitely, but yeah. So. The other thing is Clark Street Phase 1. That's basically completed. If you've been out there, you saw it was closed and now it's open, but we're not done yet. There's some supply issues with some of the products to complete the stormwater management on that project. The contractor could not get a commitment as to when it would be. So when leaving the street closed, we've opened it back up. But once those products get back in, we will be closing it back down so we can get in there and finish those stormwater management improvements along that stretch. So wanted to update you on that. The big one, another one that I guess update you on is Clark Street, the Phase 2. It's been moving a little slower than we like. We have talked to the contractor. We're getting some concerns of whether we actually want to open up another section yet this fall. And take a chance in pushing to get the concrete back and we're having a mess. We're still a little waiting on mid-am to complete some relocations in the next stages of this project. So we are contacting the contractor, have contacted them, are working with them are discussing what our options are. It may be that we push this back into next year. We we may take a look and say, hey, we can do instead of a full phase, a half a phase yet this year, get something done. But we are working with them. But this project will definitely lead over into next year. So want to make you aware of that.
Jeff, on the material side for Phase 1, what what do they have in front of them giving?
Specifically, it's some of their underground stuff that they have for the bio swales. Something I just learned today is that C900, which is a standard water pipe, is becoming next to impossible to find. So when anyone trying to install water mains is having trouble. So there's a lot of materials issues out there right now.
I'm not surprised by that at all, but just I was curious.
Which.
Do that across a lot of different businesses.
Absolutely.
Supply chain problems.
Yep. Which brings us to our patching project, which is another issue, and that's labor issues. Contractor for the arterial project, we bid it to be night work. Contractor got it set up and went to order his concrete and was informed that he could not get concrete at night. They didn't have enough drivers to fill it out, maybe one week, a month. But for the first week, he actually had to go out and hire drivers from other companies to drive his concrete suppliers' trucks at night for the first week. And now it's basically a week-by-week type thing on, you know, can I get it one night, two nights, three nights this week? Can I not get it for a couple of weeks? With that in mind, there's probably no way we're going to be able to finish that this year at the rate they're going if we have to wait on that concrete. So we're moving some of those jobs to the day, time hours. We've prioritized them. We've tried to pick the ones that have the biggest impact and keep them at night and then the ones that we can maybe get off some of the main lines and do with, not that it won't be an impact because it will. Intentionally originally intended to do them at night, but less than it would be if it was right in the middle of the university or right in the middle of a major thoroughfare at night. So we are working on that. Again, we did verify that. It wasn't just him. I called another supplier and he said the same thing, that they can't do any night work either. This would have been because they can't get enough drivers. If they take their day drivers to work at night, they don't have enough drivers during the day to keep their crews busy. So it's a industry-wide problem. They said a lot of the drivers are going from one crew to another, will work here two weeks and get a dollar an hour over here and go over here. And they're just having troubles keeping up with it right now. So it is a big problem.
You might want to mention too, is we did send out communications to potential neighborhoods impacted with that transitioning to day work.
Yes, we sent cards out. A couple of people here received those cards because we're working in their areas. But letting them know that some of that day work will be taking place and trying to make sure the public understands that, you know, it wasn't by choice, but out of necessity, to get the work done, we did have to move it to the daytime hours.
Jeff, does this free up any capacity at all in-house as we adjust with some of these contractors, but on these projects, does it does it free up any capacity for our workers to do anything else?
No, no.
Is it just strictly on a contractor basis?
It's just, well, contractor side, we've been fortunate. So far, we have not had troubles getting materials and things like that when we needed them. But it it doesn't impact us in any direct way.
Other questions, Council Ted?
Have we gotten any feedback from the Clark Street residents lately, positive or negative? Like, because I haven't heard much. So as far as I'm concerned, no news is good news.
Is a good thing.
Yeah.
I had a couple anecdotal touches with residents during the Clyde Festival. They came up and one person was impatient for it to to get done and I completely empathize, right? This is a big disruption for folks who haven't been able to get in their driveways, but I think our our team has done a really nice job trying to work one-on-one and get people through this transition, whether it's with deliveries, sharing information. Making sure simple things like garbage gets taken care of still all the time and the mail gets delivered.
Not that I want to jinx us, but we're fortunate. It hasn't been raining. It's been a muddy walk every day. They've been able to get in and out without going through the mud. So.
But the over-communication, I mean, that over, I'd say over. I mean, you communicate a lot to these folks, all of our projects, right? And the difference between now and 10 years ago or whatever. Jim and your group and and from City Hall, they're communicating every way they can, as well as that email list that they, you know, they can belong to. And so I see their frustration still, but boy, it can't ever be on lack of communications or trying. It can be the problems with contractors and concrete and supplies, which is happening everywhere, which is an interesting one. I will watch the future contracts, whether there be incentives or penalties in those. And then how does that line up with things like night versus day and concrete being delivered and some of it's out of their hands and some of it can be pushed a little bit further on those contracts, how they're written and see if we can incentivize them to you know, tip that hand a little bit towards our side.
Yeah.
If they're going to deliver concrete.
Some of the concerns though is, you know, with this being an industry-wide problem, a lot of work's going to get pushed into next year. Some of the future bids and stuff like that may be impacted. It's going to be important that we, you know, keep on schedule, get ours out early, secure them for the work and stuff like that. And so.
I commend you all for your, you know, constant communications with them. And that's what I've heard feedback from is the communications of though frustrating the job not getting done, the communications is appreciated.
I appreciate that. The we have another performance coming up on that front. We're waiting for some certainty around what the rest of the scope of the project's going to be for this construction season to then go re-engage hopefully out there at the actual work site. If it's a nice, cool evening, we get folks together, Public Works and and comms and we'll answer questions as we have in the past and share some information, hopefully good information also about what those future BMPs are going to look like, those bio cells. And start sharing some pictures about what the corridor could look like. Great.
We'll have two on the arterial, right? We'll have Alice's Road here coming up.
Yes, they should be finishing 156th Street up this week, it looks like. That section of Alice's Road is scheduled for August 2. Working with Waquis out there, we wanted to give all the residents, you know, at least a week's notice that that would be a full closure during that time for about a probably a week, week and a half period. So we didn't want to push that next week. We could push it back to August 2 to make sure that there's plenty of notification. We'll be putting message boards out, letting everybody know that, you know, it will be closed, where the detours are and so forth.
Jeff, anything else? Yeah, lots before us. I know we'll continue to talk about.
Yep.
Street work.
Yes, a lot to go. Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is is closed session. So the council will proceed into a closed session regarding potential litigation under Iowa Code, Chapter 21.5. Sub 1C. Counsel, any advice? Okay. Well, we're gonna, we're gonna leave the vote, but I just didn't know if you wanted to say anything. Don't need to. Okay, go ahead.
Move to go into closed session.
Second.
By Eric seconded by Ted to go into closed session, subject Iowa Code. Any discussion?
Your Honor, I will be voting to go into closed session, but I will not be participating in closed session due to a conference.
Very good. Thank you. Council member? Anything else? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes a five to zero to go into closed session.
Guard you.
Okay, at six fifty-three, the council has come out of closed session. Let the record reflect that no action was taken. Anything else?
Up in your honor.
Come out.
Still moved.
Second.
Foo by John, seconded by Michael to come out of closed session. Any discussion? See now with the council, please. That's five zero. Thank you, Matthew. Okay, we'll go to reports now. Pete.
Thank you, your honor. Bigger report out will come from Richard and his team as we move deeper into the summer, but thank you to everybody for attending Clive Festival, for stopping by, and I hope everybody had a great time. To a person on staff, we were all kind of talking about it and we're all very, very happy with the way that it went. Here's to good weather, right? And here's to also just a great outpouring of community affection. I think folks were hungry to have a chance to reconnect with their Clive neighbors and their other friends and family here in the region. And by all accounts, it was a great success. So we are happy to be able to tell that story. We'll make sure we extend our thanks to volunteers and everybody who attended in the upcoming utility newsletter. Next, we do have some information from Polk County Health about some dangerous heat that we're expecting over the next week. So in our social media and across other platforms, we'll remind folks what it means, what they need to do to stay healthy and stay safe, especially as they're thinking about kids and pets in locked vehicles, making sure that they know. First off, pay attention to who's in the vehicle. Don't forget to leave, to take your pets outside. Don't bring them along if you don't have to on those trips, leave them at home where they can stay nice and cool. More information will be coming from Polk County Health on that, and we'll be sharing a lot of their information from the public health experts. Three success stories to share. First, I want to congratulate the police department, Lieutenant Rayburg and his team, on a very successful K nine fundraising campaign. In the utility newsletter coming up and also on social media, we'll be getting a chance to sort of tell everybody that the goal was not only met, but exceeded for the program. And then the chief and LT will be sharing information along with the rest of our team about when the, our dog Dutch, the dog will be joining the force officially after he completes his training with his handler coming up in the, in the next few weeks. So congratulations to the police department on a very successful campaign. The fire department also has something to crow about right now. If you haven't seen it already, on social media, Lieutenant, or to be Chief Garcia, working with our, one of our video production partners, put together a fantastic story about a recent life saving event and is using that now to share information with all of our audiences about how important it is to have the things in your business or in your house of worship or any place where you're gathering people have the tools in place so that if somebody has a sudden cardiac event, that we know how to take action that can lead to saving lives. That's exactly what happened over at Aspen. We were at that life saving event earlier this spring. The team that was a part of that wonderful event then came together and put this video piece by piece together as well. And so if you haven't checked it out, I encourage you to do so. The social, the post is on the fire department's social media, Facebook page right now. We'll also share it on the website and make sure it gets across all the other social media platforms.
Outstanding. Questions for Pete, Council? Pete, thank you.
Thank you. The only thing I have to report is that I was a miserable failure in the bags tournament, but I did get further than McCoy, so.
After you left him at the altar.
Yes.
Yes, he did, yes.
Just had to throw that in.
Thank you.
Eric.
Nothing tonight.
Thanks, Ted. Appreciate it, John.
Nothing.
I want to echo Pete's comments and congratulations to everybody, particularly our staff on the success of Clive Festival. Much deserved for all of us. We needed two great days of weather and we got it. I guess the best one we've had since two thousand and six. So hats off to everybody.
Were you echoing his remarks or Ted's remarks that he was horrible as well?
I can't.
Please do, Mayor. Please do.
A couple of us were at the kickoff for our fundraising for the triad project, and so it's really exciting to get that underway. It was an underwhelming turnout, but that was because it's a very, very busy time. So it doesn't mean there's not excitement about the project, which is good to know. And then I've reported before that I became the vice chair of the Polk County Homeless Coordinating Council. We had our quarterly meeting today and had a presentation from Anna Wim about a hotel that they're converting into a homeless facility. So I found that highly, highly interesting. So Josh Mandelbaum from Des Moines is the chair and I'm the vice chair, and we're definitely trying to demonstrate interest from the core city and the suburbs. There were thirty-three people on the call, so almost all cities are represented now. It's becoming a robust conversation.
Susan, thanks for your work there. Definitely a big topic to come, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Mike?
Just one comment on the bags tournament. As promised to you all, Lisa and I were very respectful to the Clive residents as well as Mr. Weaver's ego. And we threw the tournament because we just thought it would not be proper if we won it as a Clive council member. So we went ahead and lost mayor as we should have, right? Took one for the team on purpose. And so also today, Clive is, today and tomorrow, Clive is hosting along with Drake University and Metro Waste Authority. I was in it for a few hours this morning. I'll join them again tomorrow, but Doug is leading the way for the city of Clive on this environmental education workshop for teachers. What's, it's called What's in Your Watershed? And they had a great turnout. I think they filled the class, which was twelve teachers. It's part of the EPA grant that John talked about months ago about Metro Waste Authority getting an EPA grant for a hundred thousand to do a two-year study and teachers' education on the Walnut Creek watershed and Clive agreed to host that with EPA. And so it was Metro Waste's full-time teacher, Doug, Drake professor Keith Somerville and one of his undergrads and, and Doug took them all down. Clive, hats off to Clive staff for preparing that creek access. It was all the talk on getting them down there. They did some, there'll be pictures out later, but they had a, if you can think about, remember Ghostbusters, they had a backpack on and they went in all with waiters and shocked the fish to stun them and did a fish count and all kinds of stuff. Tomorrow they'll do bird and butterfly counts about the habitat. So again, really a focus on that cross, you know, participation between Drake University and they're saying they'll get out to the communities and support the communities. It's a great thing for Drake, Clive and Metro Waste. It's kind of an odd partnership, right? But it works out perfect. And so thank you, Clive, and that's where we are. No, no, I don't think, I don't think Doug got wet, too wet, but and he's on tomorrow on spot teaching tomorrow. So it's, it's a great opportunity for us to show off.
Great stuff, Mike. And you, you just reminded me of something. I'm going to pull it back here just a second before we move to Matt. Battle of the burbs, NCMIC Battle of the Burbs Run Walk Event is coming Saturday, August seventh. I encourage you and your families, your friends, your neighborhoods, anybody that can form a team, register online and register to be on Team Clive Alive. That's who we are. That's who our city team is. We want to retain that WWF championship belt that will fit me so well. And it'll be a great time and all the proceeds go to our foundation. So exciting. So I just wanted to point that out real quickly. Counsel.
No, no bags update and no legal update.
Thank you, your honor. Just a thank you to the Historical Society for providing staff lunch today. We've got that rescheduled from last month. And so we had some staff over there at Swanson House and the depot. Thanks to them for providing lunch to our folks. Just a reminder, a week from tonight, we'll have the next tour of the public safety facility. Got a lot of new things to show there, a lot of completed rooms in terms of drywall and you'll really be able to get a sense of the space now, walking through the facilities. That'll be five thirty a week from tonight. And then just a reminder, as we get into August, we'll get busy with meetings with the strategic planning workshops and council meetings that are mixed. So thankfully, we have a little bit of a lighter agenda tonight. We know we're going to be asking a lot of your time in August and appreciate that. We'll have the first series of workshops here in person in a community room, and then that last workshop will be, will be virtual with Lyle, but he will be here and excited to catch up with you all and talking about the great things going forward for the city of Clive. So that's all. Go ahead.
Just a comment for maybe you to comment on. John and I are, and the mayor and the Public Safety Committee as well as the Facility Committee. And they're also, as you remember, we're working on the City Hall piece too, and it's, they're just a short mention of at least we're working.
Right.
Working on it and rearranging.
Yeah. And so that is going to be one of those topics for strategic planning. So we had a meeting, a facility committee meeting last Friday, walked through kind of the concepts of where we're at today with, this really started with kind of the security question of this facility in particular, of some of our access points and the multiple accesses that we have in this building. And then the pandemic kind of highlighted some things too in terms of safety and where we have publicly available restrooms and the staff spaces and whatnot. So we've been working with the same team that helped us with public safety facility to put some conceptual work together, SVP A and, and Angie and DCI to kind of give us some construction cost estimates. So some conceptual work has been done and that is, we're going to be, we've got some tweaks to make. We got some really good suggestions and comments from Facility Committee members that we want to tweak and then bring back to the full council for discussion at strategic planning. And hopefully we'll have a cost estimate by that point as well. And then depending on reactions to that, incorporate that into the CIP process. We have some, a timing window if we're able, if this is something that, that the council is interested in. Obviously Diamond Public Safety Facility will be vacated later at the end of this year. Could give us a staging opportunity to do some work here, move some staff over there temporarily. One of the big pieces of that remodel is really looking at this room in terms of some security updates that I know the council has wanted to see in terms of access points behind this dais, in terms of exits and some other things that we'd like to do from both a security and then now a technology standpoint is a new part of the conversation with having Zoom meetings for the last year, thinking through the camera systems and knowing that we're going to, you know, at least my recommendation is we continue to provide that Zoom or that virtual option going forward. How do we better set up this room to have that experience for our residents as well? So a lot more to come on that. In fact, I got a follow-up meeting on that tomorrow with SVP A's team to kind of further tweak that and then show it to you all in August.
Very good. John, you had a.
Yeah, a question. Did you want to say anything about the speed issue on a hundred and forty?
Thank you. Thank you. I almost forgot about that. So we've been getting some, some questions and some concerns on the speed on a hundred and forty-second street and the speed limit, which is currently forty miles an hour. Also some concerns and council member Jedkins has shared this in the past too, with the pedestrian crossing there with the trail connection. And so we are in the process of doing some data collecting, both on the public works and the, and the police side, putting some, some tubes out there to kind of see, okay, where's our percentile speed? Has it changed from the last time we've done it? Police is collecting some of the crash data. We want to bring that back to you. I'll talk a little bit about maybe a potential of doing a little bit of traffic study work about whether or not we're getting to that point of wanting to put number one is lowering the speed limit, which we would have to work with Waqee, and I think they're agreeable to having this discussion because they're a part of that corridor. But then also looking at that pedestrian crossing, we implemented a new device by Canary Park on Berkshire Parkway and whether or not we're at a point where the council would like to see, and then kind of understanding what the consequences would be to make sure we understand the scope of doing something similar on a hundred and forty-second street for that trail crossing to provide that additional pause for that crossing, which I know Councilor Jenkins has brought up a number of times. So I think we're getting to that point and now we've got more than in the past folks reaching out about that as well. So we're, we're starting that process and would anticipate bringing that back to you all.
Well, we can certainly be better and the sooner the better would be my comment on that. We have lots of options there. So gee, it was a county road. A rural county road for so long. John, thank you for bringing that up and more to come. Anything else, Matt?
That's all I have.
Any other questions for Matt, Council? Okay. Thanks, Matt. Matthew, any other correspondence?
We're all in the packet and I did not participate in the bags tournament.
Excellent.
Part in next year.
Counsel, anything else for the good of the order? You know, I'm going to adjourn us at seven oh nine. Thanks, everybody.